Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
Stout, Taylor, Galavan, Olson.
I would like to begin this evening with the recognition of a business partnership. Turn it over to Dr. Breckman today.
Good evening. So tonight, we're going to continue a tradition that's been in place for some time of recognizing some of our business partners in the community. In District 88, we can't do what we do for our students, for our families, without the support of the community. So between incredible partnerships with our community agencies, to our really incredibly supportive business community, we really enjoy this opportunity to be able to recognize some of our business partners that have done just things above and beyond for our students, for our families, for our staff, and help us to be able to carry out our mission of, you know, supporting our students and their futures. So tonight, we have a special business partner that we'd like to recognize. So I'd like to invite Rick and Monica Whittingham, if you can just come up to the table here, and then I'll say a few things. So Richard, Rick, and Monica Whittingham, with R. Whittingham &amp; Sons Meats Incorporated, are a prime example of a business partner and are the epitome of involved and engaged community members who work with us to achieve our goals. They live in Addison and can frequently be seen in the halls of Addison Trail High School, helping with concessions and other behind-the-scenes activities at events. They are huge supporters and advocates for the students and families of District 88, and we are proud to honor the Whittinghams as business partners in the recognition of their efforts, which include donating T-shirts for the Relay of Life of District 88 Youth Program, I'm sorry, for the Relay for Life District 88 Youth Program, an annual event that raises funds for the American Cancer Society, providing financial support for Addison Trail student who lost a parent, donating turkeys for this year's annual Thanksgiving Staff Turkey Giveaway, donating meat each year for the Addison Trails Quermes, which is our Latino food festival. It's an annual event that features traditional Latino dishes, live entertainment with music and dancing, including student performance groups, raffles, and games, donating boxes of meat to help Addison Trail families in need during the coronavirus disease pandemic, and sponsoring more than 10 families during the holidays to ensure they had gifts. So we have no words to thank you for, you know, the incredible time, effort, and resources that you've shared with District 88 and with our families. And just, we just want to say how much we appreciate all that you do, and thank you for everything you do for District 88.
On behalf of the board, we have a fact card declaring as a District 88 business partner. We appreciate everything that you've done, and if you want to say a few words, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you for this honor. But, you know, you don't do this for rewards. It's, you know, my wife and I have been very fortunate in life, and, you know, when you're fortunate like that, you give back, and we consider Addison our home. And, you know, when you, best place to give back is at home. So thank you for this acknowledgement, but, you know.
Thank you.
Giving is more important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our recognition of District 88's Best. Each month, we recognize a student from each school that's been nominated in recognition of District 88, and we'll start with the Addison Trail this evening.
Thank you. I feel like tonight is a perfect night to recognize not only the business partners, but our two individuals recognized tonight are for the Service Award, too. So just as we kind of talk about service to Addison Trail and everything that our community does, these two individuals definitely represent that. So Addison Trail is honored to recognize Leslie Diaz as this month's recipient of 88's Best. So I feel like it's a trend this year, and I keep saying it, but it's definitely true. Leslie's name, as many of the other ones, have been on our list for some time, and we've just been itching to recognize her for everything that she has done at Addison Trail. But Leslie, your teachers say it best, so I'm going to do my best to summarize some of the comments here as, you know, we have quite a few. But I'll start with Mr. Lyons, mock trial sponsor, commented that Leslie is truly deserving of being honored as District 88's Best for the month of February. Although I have never had the privilege of having her in class, I have been most fortunate to have her as a member of our mock trial team. She joined our team last season and has been one of our leaders since day one. While she is well-versed in all aspects of mock trial, she specializes in cross-examination of opposing witnesses. You'll hear why she's so good at that later. She is outgoing, respectful, and has a tremendous work ethic. Kierbong AP Physics teacher shared Leslie brings such a positive energy wherever she goes. She's an incredible hard worker and never gives up. I always appreciate her can-do spirit in our AP Physics classroom. Mr. Shader, News Channel Director, stated Leslie is a kind-hearted person who is always looking out for others. She has been a huge part of our news channel and an even bigger role in bringing Spanish news to Addison Trail High School. I am lucky to have worked with such an amazing student. Mr. Olson, a teacher of multiple classes, says how he cannot believe that he has to say something nice about Leslie. He says, "You're going to understand that," and I had to say it, so he does say something nice, though. Honestly, Leslie truly deserves to be recognized as one of 88's Best. He had the privilege to have had Leslie in class during her freshman and sophomore years and to witness her growth as a student, but more importantly, as a valued community member, has been inspirational. I have seen Leslie become one of the strongest representatives of what it means to be a Blazer. What stands out the most to me is how much she, how much Leslie cares about others, whether that be her friends at the breakfast table, an old geography and history teacher walk in the halls, or those she helps with her various service activities. Leslie is definitely District 88's Best. Ms. Pronto, AP Macro teacher, commented Leslie is a ball of energy in the best of ways. She inspires all of the students in her orbit to work hard and engage, and be engaged participants in our classroom. Her enthusiasm made me excited to come in and teach every day. Ms. Colleen Kane, Algebra, Geometer, or LGO Honors teacher, says I had the extreme pleasure of being Leslie's math teacher her freshman year. She was one of those students who just lights up the room. Leslie has a wonderful, was a wonderful student, displayed an incredible work ethic, and is a natural leader. What I remember most about her, though, was that she always was so joyful and helpful to her classmates and to me. Ms. Ferraro, Leslie's junior AP English, Ling, and Composition teacher, described her as a ray of sunshine, positive, upbeat, curious, and her positivity is contagious. She genuinely seemed thrilled to be at school every single day, and when she greets her teachers, she's excited and happy to see them. If she's receiving an award for service, then I think making her teachers' days is definitely one of her acts of service. I sincerely appreciated the effort she put into class every day. She was an active participant in class discussions, a leader when working with groups, and a thoughtful, reflective writer who worked diligently to improve and impress. Ms. McWeeny, Student Council sponsor, stated that while I never had Leslie in class, she made herself well-known in the world of activities and Blazer ambassadors. Leslie is one of the most warm, kind-hearted, bubbly students who is always positive about Addison Trail. She is extremely dedicated to making this school a better place in her service for our community. Ms. Clark, English teacher and publication sponsor, says Leslie is the brightest ball of energy and positivity I have ever come across in my teaching career. I consider myself lucky to have her in Publications class as one of the co-editors-in-chief. She is receiving this recognition for her service, and I can't think of anyone, anything more in service of this school than creating a yearbook that is inclusive and engaging of all students. Leslie genuinely cares about all students and teachers. Her kindness and positivity radiate throughout a room. You feel better about your day when you see Leslie. I have never met someone more complimentary and more engaged in this school than Leslie. She looks out for everyone and wants all of our yearbook kids to succeed. I consider myself lucky to know her. Mr. Grace, tennis coach, stated that Lola, a nickname, has been a part of tennis for all four years of high school. She has been a hard-working and very dedicated member to both JV and varsity teams. Lola went above and beyond as a team member and always tried her best. She strived to get everyone involved, recruit new members, and build team unity. And finally, your school counselor, Mr. Shane Cole, says I don't know if there are enough quality adjectives to describe Leslie: kind, caring, bright, industrious, and on and on. Leslie has worked in our guidance office as an assistant in past years. Observing her interactions with peers and adults is where her character is on display. Leslie is always willing to help volunteer, problem-solve, and do anything to improve things for her fellow classmates. I could not be more proud of her and what she means to our building. She is the Tom Brady of Blazer pride. You can see just kind of the group that we covered, those you had in class, those you didn't have in class, teachers that just saw you in the hallways four years later, from your freshman year all the way through to your senior year. Leslie has not only been engaged in all the service activities, she has also taken one of the hardest academic schedules that we offer at Addison Trail, having completed 11 advanced placement courses at Addison Trail, six honors courses. As you heard, she is a part of our athletic department, and where she is a varsity tennis player, as well as badminton. She has been a part of theater, mock trial, as you heard, Ola, Key Club, where she serves as our vice president, National Honor Society inductee. She is a Blazer ambassador, where she has been one of my go-tos for presenting to our eighth graders to provide support in that transition. I think maybe three, four presentations with me over the years. Blazer News, where you heard that she has served as an anchor and saw a need for our Spanish-speaking population and truly advocated to be, to bring that Spanish news channel to Addison Trail. She is also a member of Italian Club, AT Yearbook, where you heard she's a co-editor-in-chief. She's been a part of Symphony Orchestra. She sits on the principal's advisory, as well as just today, even our superintendent advisory. Throughout her time at Addison Trail, she has received the Seal of My Literacy in Spanish, working on Italian, it sounds like. She has been a member of the Distinct Honor Roll every semester at Addison Trail, English Department student this semester, and then all academic honors most recently this past fall. After high school, Leslie plans to attend DePaul University, actually committed just yesterday, and study political science in hopes to become an attorney and maybe practice some type of family law. That's where that kind of argumentative mock trial stuff comes in. But Leslie, you know, service is always a fun one for us because, you know, just like our community members that were recognized tonight and others, we can't do what we need to do at Addison Trail without students like yourself. And just truly thank you on behalf of the entire staff and students for everything you've done. You're not done yet. I know we still got a little bit of time left together, but truly just thank you and congratulations on being this month's recipient of 88's Best.
Thank you.
At this time, the floor is yours, Leslie.
So I wrote a couple of stuff down. First of all, I want to thank the board and the AT admin for this honor, Mr. Andrews for listening to me and emailing me back whenever I have problems or need anything. Without the support from admin, I wouldn't be where I am today. This was probably one of the biggest awards that I really wanted to get, so I want to thank all of you guys because it's one of my biggest dreams, so thank you. I also wanted to kind of talk about how the act of service is something that I wanted to help out people, and that was kind of what I hoped I would get through. So I'm very glad that a lot of them saw it through my service. Spanish is probably one of, like, the biggest power, like, thing that I have, so I wanted to use it to my advantage, and I wanted to help people out. So I'm very happy that this award goes not just with academics or sports. It's something that is done through volunteering. So I want to have an impact on people, and that was kind of the goal of where this all started. A couple of shout-outs that I wanted to give were to my parents, God, parents, or siblings. They're my rocks, and I wouldn't be here without them. So my teachers as well, they're just cool people, so wanted to give them a couple of shout-outs. My counselor, Mr. Cole, because without him, college process or just in general help, I wouldn't be here without him. And whenever I'm stuck, he's always there to recommend either classes or anything that I should do for applications of some sort. All of my teachers for language, Ms. Piloto, Bendy, and Nunez, because without them, I wouldn't know the value of how much my language means to other people. And then my coaches, Hegner or Mr. Olson, because they're always going against whatever I say, so it's a great counterpoint whenever I'm wrong. Also, Mr. Lyons, because without him, I wouldn't be going with my passions and wouldn't be learning as much with what I want to learn for my future. So thanks to him, I get to experience a little of that before I actually head to college. Mr. Marston, my gym teacher, because without his energy at zero hour, I would probably be sleeping most of the time. And then Ms. Clark and Ms. Grady, because they're truly like one of my best friends ever, and they're always there to listen to me or help me with anything that I need, and they're always giving me opportunities to help people out, or whenever they need help, I'm always willing to. So probably those people.
Thank you. So before the board meeting, we had an opportunity to ask some questions, so open up to the boards. Ask any questions you'd like to.
I'll go first. So I asked you downstairs, of all the things that you've done, what is the one thing that you've done that you didn't think you'd do when you started at Addison Trail?
Yeah, so what I would say was probably girls' tennis. That was a very unexpected decision that I did. It was like right at the end of the summer, and me and my best friend wanted to be involved, and I had never done sports when I was, when I was little. So getting to experience that was really cool, and I got to experience that for the next four years. And the seasons in the fall were always my favorite to go to because even though I got burnt most of the time, it was always so amazing to play with my friends and just getting to make families of every year that I had, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Then I will ask one. So why do you want to be a lawyer?
I think that helping out people was always like my dream, and I've gotten the opportunity to do a couple programs at school with little kids and preschoolers. That's kind of bound on me and my sisters here, so we like helping people out. And so preschool was probably like my biggest, like, oh, I want to help people out. And family laws was what's kind of leaning me towards it because I really want to give people the opportunity to have a life that I had, and I had a really, like, great childhood, so I want those kids to grow and live the life that they deserve, so.
That's awesome. Keep it going. Congratulations, and we're very proud of you, and we're looking forward to all the things you're going to continue to accomplish the rest of the school year and looking forward to what you're going to be doing in the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. And now Willabook.
Thanks so much. Willabook is honored to introduce Eddie Devens as this month's recipient of 88's Best. Presenting Eddie to the board is almost like presenting a staff member. He is that visible at Willabook High School. He is anywhere and everywhere, and it is, you know, you'll hear from the comments and the accolades from the staff members just why that is. I'm going to start with Mr. Sullivan, our athletic director, who said, "I have had the distinct honor and privilege of knowing Eddie Devens since he was an elementary school student at St. Pius in Lombard. Over the past 14 years, I have witnessed Eddie become a responsible, respectful, and driven individual. He's been the leader and driving force of our creative media production team since it began in January 2024. He's our lead broadcaster on live streams, co-hosts of podcasts, and our go-to interview reporter. Just this past week, he facilitated a one-on-one interview with legendary Chicago Bull Center Bill Cartwright in front of an audience of 100 District 88 students. He approached the opportunity with remarkable professionalism, and Bill Cartwright even expresses admiration for Eddie's interview skills. Eddie never turns down the opportunity to take photos or video at an event, whether it be athletics, clubs, or school-related. The amount of time that Eddie donates to our media team provides an immense service to our student, athletes, coaches, family, school community, and local community. Due to his actions, and he helps keep all District 88 stakeholders informed of all the great things occurring on a daily basis at Willabook High School. In addition to volunteering his own time and talent, Eddie makes it a priority to dedicate time to providing leadership, mentorship, and guidance to our underclassmen on the media team. He recognizes that he is helping prepare the future, and that training he provides is helping to shape his lasting legacy at Willabook High School. I'm eager to see which career path Eddie selects, as I'm confident that whatever he chooses, he'll excel and achieve great success." It continues with Ms. Ayed. World Legos teacher says Eddie truly embodies the vision of Willabook High School by being respectful, responsible, engaged in his learning. He contributes to class by asking insightful questions that provide true learning and growth. He is curious, inquisitive, and thoughtful. In addition, he has a wonderful, cheerful, lighthearted energy that helps to create a positive learning environment for the whole class. He is very deserving of the title of District 88's Best. Mr. Garcia, Department Head for Science, says Eddie has shown a ton of academic success in Project Lead-Away Medical Interventions. He masters the material and gets excellent scores on exams. He's also a gifted writer, is able to explain concepts and provide evidence for his claims at a very high level. Beyond that, he also cares deeply about his work and helps others be the best they can be when working in a lab group. The director of our winter play says, Sarah Corkery, says, "I want to add my praise for this exceptional student. It was delightful to have Eddie Devens take on one of the lead roles in February production of Wait Until Dark. He is an utterly dependable, charming, and hard-working actor. Although playing the part of Mike Tallman was doubtless a much bigger commitment than he maybe initially realized, he came to every rehearsal with a bright, cheerful attitude and a serious dedication to getting things done. I know his fellow students appreciate his innate sense of camaraderie and good humor. It certainly made our rehearsal process fun and productive." So let's just recap. That's only four individuals that have talked about Eddie so far. And thus far, he's the head of our media team, which never existed, so he's the creator and the leader of that, leaving a legacy at Willabook High School. World Language, he excels. Science, he excels. On stage, he excels. He's just continued. That's why I think he should have a landyard in terms of being a staff member already. But it continues. Mr. Artman, social studies teacher, says, "I have Eddie as a student in AP Psychology. He's always engaged and ready to tackle the goals of the day. He brings energy and conversation to classroom topics. Always ready to engage in a topic of the day and ask more questions about it and connected examples outside the classroom. He provides new examples and connections that others in the classroom can reflect on as well." Teacher assistant Ms. Nelson says Eddie is a kind and compassionate student who continuously goes above and beyond in all that he does. He never forgets those who helped him along the way, always showing gratitude and respect, no matter how much time has passed. His kindness extends not only to his classmates, but also to students from his former elementary school and future warriors, demonstrating his unwavering sense of community and leadership. Beyond his outstanding character, Eddie excels in multiple areas: athletics, the arts, and journalism, showcasing his diverse talents and dedication. His passion, determination, generosity make him a role model for others, and there's no doubt he has a bright and promising future. Congratulations, Eddie, on this well-deserved recognition." Ms. Scala, your math teacher, says Eddie joined my AP Statistics a week or so into the school year because he decided he could, he should challenge himself and move to AP Statistics. Very happy they decided to do so. He has a best attitude and enhances the learning environment. He's always willing to participate, help his peers, and has the grit to finish the task. He's also inclusive to all and always finds a way to engage people in a conversation, even if they aren't in his own friend circle. He is an excellent choice for his award. Congratulations, Eddie. And finally, Mr. Epple, who made sure that he shared this with me today, he wanted to make sure it was included. He said Eddie is one of those warriors that forms relationship bridges between various groups of students throughout our building. Most recently, Eddie was one of our lead actors in our winter play, Wait Until Dark, and he performed spectacularly. Not only did he work hard and grow as a talented actor, because he's also a talented varsity athlete, his involvement and enthusiasm drew in many audience members, friends, coaches, et cetera, who wanted to come out and support Eddie, and doing so, came to appreciate our theater program and the size and caliber of our productions. I see he's applied those acting, this is a little preview. Eddie was helping us with the District 88 pickleball tournament video that many of you saw, so he did a tremendous job. So he's putting all those acting skills to work as well. That's a one-take, by the way, right? We do those videos in one take, so you're going to, we're going to have it either way, but he did a tremendous job. But Mr. Epple continues, "Beyond bridging student groups and fostering appreciative relationships, another area where Eddie shines is at the end of the day." That's a phrase that gets tossed around a lot to mean a variety of things, but at the end of the day, you can count on Eddie to be there, offering to help, pick up after the Thursday night varsity football dinner. You can count on Eddie to be there at the end of the day, helping put away equipment. And I've learned that when you build a gigantic 16-foot-tall set on stage, at the end of the day, you can count on Eddie Devens to be there. at the end of the day, you can count on Eddie Devens to be there. Drill in hand, helping him take down walls and platforms and to check in before leaving to make sure he's not anything else, that there's not anything else he can help with. Thank you Eddie, you are truly one of District 88's Best." So Eddie's obviously impacted throughout Willbrook High School. As Mr. Andrews said, he's been on our list of individuals to recognize with this award and recognition throughout the year. This seemed fitting, given the breadth of what you accomplished. Academically, he will complete his high school career, having eight advanced placement courses, as well as multitude of Project Lead the Way courses that we just mentioned. He's an AP scholar. He's had honorable status each semester of high school career. He's an Illinois State Scholar. He's been inducted to the National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Science Honor Society, Civitas for Social Studies and the World Language Honor Society. He's also been recognized with the Human Relations Award and the Inspire Distinguished Service Award as a founding member, as we mentioned about the, of the Willbrook Media Team. Beyond the classroom, he devotes his skills and talents to a multitude of co-curricular activities. A member of our football and track teams, earning all conference and academic all-state honors. And as you just heard, most recently as a lead role in our winter play, Wait Until Dark. And in his free time, he helps out at the dean's office as a dean's assistant. But his impact truly has been with the media team. And it's not too often you get to say that you created something in high school that's going to be sustained and is going to be there for years to come for other individuals. The fact that you've done the media team, but also created your own podcast and had the creativity do it. He got a chance to be the commentator for our first ever night softball game. You had one of the best calls that we've ever had when that home run was hit. I'll never forget that. But also then to have the opportunity to do the interview like you did last week with Mr. Cartwright. Oh, by the way, beyond Willbrook High School, Eddie also serves as a canvasser for legislators for the state of Illinois. So he finds a little bit of extra time to do that as well. He plans to study medicine after Willbrook and as well as to continue his athletic career. He hasn't quite finalized that decision yet, but with the intent of potentially serving as a team doctor for a professional sports team in the future. Eddie, I can't say enough for the work you've done, obviously throughout your high school career. Most certainly, the impact you've had upon so many members of the Willbrook community and beyond. And it's truly with great honor that we get to recognize you as District 88's Best.
This time the floor, George.
All right, this is on? First off, I want to thank my parents. They've been a wonderful influence and it helps having a ride to and from school every day, to and from sports and just being able to share five minutes every morning, listen to a new song or just talk about yesterday's events. It makes life easier. I want to thank my family for always being extremely supportive in every endeavor that I take up, whether it be theater, sports, the media team. I want to thank Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Hohn for presenting me with the opportunity to found this media team. A year or so ago, I never would have expected it to turn into what it is now. And I want to thank all of my teachers that have also aided in this process. Mr. Garcia and specifically Mr. Schmidt, because that is what really drove me into the medical field. At the start of my junior year, I had no idea where I wanted to go or what I wanted to be. And taking the human body systems course really pushed me in the direction of medicine. I also want to thank the dean's office. It helps being able to go in there every day and see a friendly face, whether it be Mr. Ross or Ms. Mendez at the front desk. It always helps brighten my mood. I want to thank Dr. Kraus for always being able to give a smile and a fist bump, no matter how the day is going. And I also want to thank my coaches across all sports, specifically Coach Hildreth. He has been a massive influence in my life. He has been a friend and somebody that I can come to for advice, for help. And we have some fun new media team opportunities coming up soon. Hopefully like a little food review thing. And I also want to congratulate Leslie. It's very awesome that I get to share the stage with her today. And I want to thank all of you. As she said, it has been a dream of mine to get this award. I remember opening the newsletter every week and being jealous of whoever's up there because I'm like, ah, I really want it. And so the opportunity to stand up here and present to you all, I'm very lucky to do so. And I want to thank all of you.
Okay, so you already answered my question, which teacher had the biggest influence. So we'll open up to the rest of the board.
Congratulations Eddie. So can you share with us some of your favorite memories from high school?
The one that sticks out to me the most is every single summer for football, we would have a three-day trip to the University of Concordia in Chicago with the football team. And it's three days of just sports and hanging out with friends. And that is something that really has stuck with me. I've built lifelong relationships from that and it's something that's going to stick with me forever because of just how much I enjoyed it. And another thing that was just mentioned is getting to interview Bill Cartwright. That is pretty cool and he is taller than you'd expect. I've never felt smaller in my life and I'm not a small guy.
Oh, you want me to go again?
Sure.
All right, so from the football field to the stage, is that a new thing for you?
For the most part, yes. I had a very brief acting career in elementary school. You could see me as Pigpen in Your Good Man Charlie Brown, where I had a whopping five lines. Or in Finian's Rainbow, where I was sharecropper number four and I had one line. And I nailed that line. It was great day in the morning and then I would high five Ali Vittorio and skip in a circle. And it needs to be noted, all three shows, I missed the high five every single time. So it is, having that large of a role was absolutely a new experience.
So it sounds like you're picking the better role of going to become a doctor.
Who knows?
Well, congratulations. At this time, I'm going to ask both 88 students to come forward as well as their parents.
Oh, all the way up?
All the way up here. They don't trust me to carry all this. Let's put this, I don't trust me to carry all this. Okay, so first of all, we have a certificate that declares you as 88's Best. You're going to get lots of these. Get you started doing the handshake. Okay, next you get, anyways, gift certificates so you can take your parents out. That's why we give this out here now, so you know we got that.
That's actually only enough for one meal.
For you?
Especially for 88's Best. And we ask the moms or dads to come forward because there's boxes, awful lot to carry for you. Okay, so congratulations. So congratulations to all of you. We're going to take a short 10-minute break. We have refreshments, opportunity for the board to have an opportunity to talk with you further. And congratulations both of you and we're looking forward to hearing everything you're going to accomplish in the next few months and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have to run roll and there's.
He wasn't too offended when I told him I don't drink Pepsi, I like Coke. He agreed. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Roll call, please.
Kane.
Here.
Hoyer.
Here.
Finneken.
Here.
Stow.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Okay, I'd entertain, oh, sorry, no, I can't do them. Do we have petitions and hearings? Do we have any cards this evening?
Good evening. We did have one public comment submitted.
Thank you.
It's from Christina Abashian of Willow Park, and her comment is, "My name is Christina Abashian, and I am a parent of a Willowbrook freshman. I am writing to address the recent communication challenges regarding the school closure and e-learning day on February 12, 2025. My broader concerns are twofold. What backup measures are being taken to ensure parents and students are receiving information if the technology that exists fails? Is there a check and balance system to ensure the technology is working before assumptions and expectations are made? When communication regarding school closures happen, what is the plan for holding students accountable for attendance? Furthermore, I am concerned about the support provided to teachers. They have invested their planning time in preparing for an e-learning day, yet there seems to be a lack of clear communication to students about what is expected. Why is it the teacher's responsibility to spend additional time sending messages to students? This situation is disappointing and highlights a persistent communication issue within District 88. I am happy to go into details of my personal experiences with my son if needed. I urge you to address these concerns promptly to improve our communication strategies. Thank you for your attention to this matter."
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we'll move along to the motion to establish consent agenda. Any say a motion?
I move to establish a consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, any questions, comments? Seeing none, and roll call, please.
Finneken.
Yes.
Stow.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, I'd entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Sergeant.
Roll call, please.
Stow.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finneken.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motions approved, and the consent agenda's approved. Next, we'll move along to the separate action items. First one is treasurer's report for January 2025.
Presenting to the board this evening for month ending January 31, 2025, a total balance of $74,281,413.92. We did begin a lettered T-bill investments of just under $1.5 million with maturities in July of this year, November of 2026, and then March of 2027, earning 4.22%. Otherwise, this month's interest income was $268,517.22, bringing our year-to-date interest income to $2,506,386.88.
I move that the Board of Education approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Sergeant.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finneken.
Yes.
Stow.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have the budget status report for January 2025.
Thank you. For the education fund, local revenues through January, the district has received 48.41%, or approximately $25 million of budget revenues, which is up slightly by 0.49% over the prior year. For other local revenue, we are up 7.21% from this time last year. CPPRT collections, or corporate personal property replacement taxes, we've received 63.65%. Investment income is strong in this fund and currently at collected over $1.585 million. A la carte food sales of $351,200, year-to-date, or 80.74% of budget. And then finally, the registration fees, textbook parking fee budgets are following similar trends year-over-year with about 83.82% collected to date. State aid collections are currently on target with approximately $4.2 million received, or 56.11%. And we've seen approximately 91% of the federal money come through, or a little over $3.1 million. In regards to the education fund expenditures, they are trending slightly down at 0.33% year-over-year. Salaries are on track, slightly down this time last year at negative 0.55%. Benefits are on a similar track, slightly up 0.82% year-over-year. Contractual services are down 1.3%, and supplies are up year-over-year at 16%. Capital outlay is starting to stabilize, down now 20.1% at this time year-over-year, and tuition expenses is currently trending down, or relatively flat, down 0.66% year-over-year. In the operation and maintenance fund, revenues at 49.15% or approximately $3.98 million year-to-date, slightly down year-over-year at 1.53%. Investment income is at 74% of budget. The only state revenue expected in this fund is the $50,000 maintenance grant, which we will expect to see in quarter two of this year, and no federal revenue is budgeted in the ONM fund. In regard to expenses, year-over-year activities at 65% expended, or approximately 9.4% versus prior year. Salaries are down slightly, 1.01%, benefits are also down 2.84%. Utilities and purchase service expense is up 19.64% year-over-year, and supplies are up 10.12%. This is due, again, to the unexpected repairs that we are starting to see in this fund that we talked about earlier this month. Capital expenditures are up 37.7% year-over-year. Again, these projects are all but done. We are just waiting to finalize the payment for the 10-year health, life, safety, long-range planning report. In the transportation fund, revenue of approximately $3.4 million, or 46.2% of budget, down 9.2% compared to this time last year. Within other local revenue, investment income is currently at 167% of budget, which is great. And then we did receive our second categorical payment from the state. So, you know, up until last month, we only had received one, so we have gotten the second one of the four that we planned and budgeted for. Again, no federal revenue planned for in the transportation fund. In regard to expenses, we have about $2.7 million of expenses in the transportation fund, which are trending up 2.9% over the prior year. However, looking back two years to January 2023, we are trending down 6.6%, so we are moving the needle in the right direction. Finally, the IMR pension fund, revenue of just over $1.2 million, or 53.2% of budget, up 5.95% year-over-year, and then expenses of $1,158,261, or roughly 52.15% of budget, slightly up 1.44% over the prior year. As of right now, you know, kind of the main focuses are still transportation fund as we look and work to rebuild that fund after we over-expended it, and then really focusing in on our operations maintenance fund in terms of the purchase services, as those are an area of concern at this point.
I move that the Board of Education approve the budget status report as presented.
Sergeant.
I just have one quick question. So, on the federal, have we received any communications yet as far as, like, anticipated?
Nothing, nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet. So, it's more so for next year's budget. The only thing of concern right now is the transportation state reimbursement. In the governor's budget allocation, they didn't budget a lot of extra funds for reimbursing schools for regular or special ed transportation. It was really only for orphanage. So, we're expecting that the rates we receive, we are typically given a, you know, percentage back to the districts, you know, in years, it might be 86% for regular or special ed. This year, it's around 77%, so 77 cents on the dollars come back to us. With no additional increase in funds, we expect those to drop next year. So, things to look forward to, but that's on a state level. Nothing really for federal at this point. I know they're really targeting, like, DEI programs and initiatives, and a lot of our grants are not being utilized for those purchases. So, really nothing of concern at this point.
Thanks.
I have one more question, too. I'm just looking at the utility expenses, and water kind of jumped out at me because it's really high. I'm just curious what drives that.
It could be anything from use. So, you know, we've used more water, whether that is, you know, plumbing on the inside, flushes, refilling the tanks. So, I know it's upcoming summer when we go to do the hot water tank replacement at Ascent Trail, we'll have to refill those tanks, and that'll be another cost driver. In Willowbrook, you know, we power wash the bleachers. It was earlier in the year, but those are some of the things that kind of catch up. And then a lot of it could be timing of when the bills come in from the villages, and when they get paid.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then, roll call then.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finneken.
Yes.
Stow.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have item C, the building budget allocation request for 2024, 2025, or 2025, 2026.
Okay, so tonight, we are recommending, for consideration, the following 25, 26 building budget allocations for supplies, capital outlay, purchase services, and athletic programs. For the upcoming school year, we are recommending to keep flat supplies and purchase services, which includes staff development and structural equipment repairs. In keeping the budget flat, this maintains the increases that we authorized last year, which included the additional $140,000 for the athletic programs, which were the $100,000 in supplies, and then $40,000 in purchase services. But it's really getting, kind of supporting the effort to get back to a balanced budget. So, in the write-up, is you'll have kind of the historical background of budget allocations. This is a chart going back to 2010, 2011, and over the last 15 years or so, the net change of an increase is $349,249. The supply allocation is distributed to the building principals based upon their respective annual weighted student projected enrollment, and from there, the principals will distribute across their academic departments. As of the fiscal year 2020, 21, the annual base building capital outlay for furniture, fixtures, and equipment was restored to the fiscal year 2009, 10 levels of $50,000 per building to support the growing needs across many departments for replacement equipment. In the past, the volatility in the capital outlay category was primarily due to the added cost of updating our drivers' education vehicles. The last time in which we completed that fleet, we finalized in 2018, 19. So, it's been roughly seven years since we last did it, and as such, we kind of have a fleet that's been aging, and we need to start replacing those vehicles. So, the plan for next year is to replace two drivers' ed vehicles, one at each building.
I move that we recommend the, I'm sorry, I'm going to recommend, move that the Board of Education approve the building budget allocation request for the 2025, 2026 as submitted.
Okay.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finneken.
Yes.
Stow.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have the transportation service renewal.
So, no real changes with this renewal from what we talked about last time. So, this is a five-year contract, in which case Cottage Hill would be averaging the cost over the five-year term to 5.65%. All other clauses of the penalty rates and the maintenance that Cottage Hill does on our vehicles would stay in place. This also allows Cottage Hill the ability to compete with other local businesses in the area who are fighting for drivers, trying to bring stability to our, you know, program to bus both regular and special ed students.
I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed contract renewal with Cottage Hill for regular and special education transportation services as presented. I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed contract renewal with Cottage Hill for regular and special education transportation services as presented.
Sergeant.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finneken.
Yes.
Stow.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have the renewal of the vending service agreement for 2025, 26.
We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the renewal agreement for beverage and snack vending services for the 25, 26 school year with canteen. This agreement does not involve the purchase of any items, as it is a turnkey service of vendor-owned equipment and product in which the district receives commissions from sales. Those commissions have historically been deposited into building activity accounts for student-related activities. Canteen has offered to continue with a one-year extension. The commission structure will remain the same as the prior year with 36% on snacks and 20% on cold beverages.
I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal agreement for beverage and snack vending for the 2025, 26 school year with canteen.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Finneken.
Yes.
Stow.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have the purchase of bus cameras.
We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the proposal submitted by Safety Vision in the total amount of $47,393.11 for the purchase of bus cameras. Responses were received from nine vendors, as noted in the attached proposal summary. The initial request was for 10 buses with three cameras each for a total of $15,288.10. Because the proposal was under budget, we were able to extend the bus cameras to 31 of the buses. After reviewing the age and condition of some of the older buses, we will not be adding cameras to five of our spare buses. Safety Vision provides a three-year warranty on its products. The district plans on using the savings from this project to begin the procurement of an activity bus.
I move that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of the proposal submitted by Safety Vision in the total amount of $47,393.11 for the purchase of bus cameras.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question. It's semi- itemized in the bid. It says three-camera security system covering the bus interior, GPS metadata recording.
So, the cameras will record, and it has, it's GPS-enabled, so when we go back to review the video, we can see where the bus location was.
Okay. My question was just, who will be installing the cameras?
So, Safety Vision?
They, so the price includes the installation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Even better. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Stow.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Hoyer.
Yes.
Finneken.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motion's approved. Purchase of edge switches.
We are recommending that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid from CDW government for the purchase of switches and access points in the amount of $435,330. We received two responses for this proposal as outlined in the attached matrix. The district presently has older data internet infrastructure equipment that needs to be replaced to access the internet to exchange information between its locations. Part of this purchase is eligible for a percentage discount under the E-rate program. The district is anticipating an 80% discount on total eligible amounts. The remaining 20% is the responsibility of the district. The district's portion is contingent upon receiving the funding commitment from FCC.
I move that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid from CDW government for the purchase of switches and access points in the amount of $435,330.
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have a question. It's semi, it's capital, it's E-rate.
When you say we get a discount from them, where does that money actually come from? Like, why are, what is the discount, in brief?
So, there's a federal program?
Is that, do we know if that's in any danger of being?
Is that, do we know if that's in any danger of being discontinued, since it's a federal program?
It's always being looked at, so, you know, it's one of those things where you don't know if the administration's going to do anything with it. You plan for them to maintain the program, which provides a lot of the lower-income rural schools with the ability for connectivity. But at the same time, nothing's off the table.
Right.
This is just a way for us to be a part of the program. Because we are at a certain level, freed and reduced students, rural-income students, we get kind of eighty cents on the dollar back. Whereas, you know, if we didn't have it in the program and possess it all, we still would need to probably purchase the ed switches, and we would burden the full cost of four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
From O and N. Okay, thank you.
These are timeline, that information coming yes and no.
In terms of?
Of whether they approve the discount.
We're approved until the federal government pulls it from us.
Oh, I see. So, we're good to go until we hear no.
Until we hear otherwise.
Okay, can we please order this quickly? Roll call, please. Sorry, anybody else have any questions, please? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Okay, next, we have, oh, let's see, this, purchase of the secondary internet services.
We are recommending that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid from Comcast for the purchase of a secondary internet service in the amount of six hundred eighty-three dollars per month for thirty-six months. We received three responses for this proposal as outlined in the attached matrix. Obtaining a secondary internet service will enhance operational reliability and ensure seamless connectivity. This additional service will provide us with an alternative network connection, reducing the risk of disruptions that could impact our staff and students. Part of this purchase is eligible for a percentage discount under the E-rate program. The district is anticipating eighty percent discount on total eligible amounts. The remaining twenty percent is the responsibility of the district, and the district's portion is contingent upon receiving the funding commitment from the FCC.
I move that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid from Comcast for the purchase of a secondary internet service in the amount of six hundred eighty-three dollars per month for thirty-six months.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Next, move along to discussion items, the Illinois Vision twenty thirty.
Charlie, you want to, there we go. Okay. My notes as well. So, tonight, we wanted to bring to the board's attention the Vision twenty thirty, which I know during the year, and at our time at the triple I conference and in other settings, you've heard a little bit about this visioning process and what has been determined as the goals and vision for K-12 education in the state of Illinois. So, we wanted to bring this short recap to you tonight, because we have been asked, like many school districts across the state, to pass a resolution in support of Vision twenty thirty. And we will be bringing back in our next meeting that recommendation to pass the resolution, because we certainly are in favor of the direction. So, Vision twenty thirty is essentially a group of, it's a vision that has been set with a framework for advocacy by the largest organizations, educational organizations in the state. So, it includes Illinois Association of School Boards, you can go to the next slide, Charlie. The Illinois Association of School Boards, the Illinois Association of School Administrators, the Illinois Principal Association, and many others. So, the largest, you know, educator organizations that we have in the state came together with groups of stakeholders from all the different groups, and again, different perspectives, to look at really what are the largest issues that need to be addressed? What is the vision for K-12 education across the state? And how can we come together to advocate for needed changes, as well as certainly for funding? So, just going to hit on a couple of the highlights of this. We definitely, you know, in the packet tonight, there's more detail behind, you know, each aspect of this. But one of the biggest drivers is the dramatic increase in mandates and the large majority being unfunded. So, if you look at just the size of the school code in the last twenty-four years, we've also been pointing out that in the most, the latest volume, not only is it so much larger, but the font is smaller as well. And so, you could see now that the volume of what has, what schools have been asked to absorb with, again, very little support and funding to follow. So, that is one driver in terms of some of the advocacy efforts. But if you look at kind of some of the things that are included within the vision, certainly it focuses on future-driven skills. So, there's a focus certainly on career readiness, looking at, you know, again, the needs of the workforce across the nation, the shift, you know, the paradigm shift from, again, only really looking at college entrance to looking at, again, comprehensive career development, starting in the younger grades. So, you'll see that included here, really watching the data trends in terms of, you know, for college graduates being prepared for the jobs that are available, and the shortages that we're seeing in some areas. So, that's certainly a big focus here, and a heavy focus on dual credit. And again, the high, probably the highest priority for the curricular needs that have been outlined here across the state is the access to dual credit and the streamlined, you know, the need for a streamlined process for teacher credentialing. We've talked many times here at the board level of barriers, you know, that we have encountered. This is going on across the state. There's lots of inconsistencies in terms of what is required of teachers, in terms of credentialing to be approved by the colleges to have dual credit. But certainly, that is one very, very high priority, and Illinois is, despite, you know, all of our efforts, we've certainly increased the opportunities, but we still are behind looking at compare, you know, comparisons to other states in terms of the opportunities our students have. So, that is certainly a high priority here. Student safety and well-being, lots of effort to build, I would say, consolidated resources, you know, to ensure that schools across the state have access to the resources needed to be able to provide, you know, adequate levels of safety measures, and lots of, again, pooling efforts to ensure that the materials and the different protocols are available and consistent across the state with resources tied to that. Certainly, a need for a high quality and diverse educator pipeline, so lots of efforts around the recruitment, retention, looking at building more alternative pathways into the profession, and looking for more flexibility and licensure. That's also a focus of Vision twenty thirty. And curriculum and instructional flexibility, so really kind of trying to ease off on the mandates to allow then enough time to meet the local curricular priorities within districts. Go ahead, Charlie. Another area is certainly the assessment system that needs overhaul. Two issues that have been targeted, first, the timely and useful measure of student proficiency and growth over time. So, looking at, first of all, getting results back to districts in a way that those results can be utilized for instructional purposes. As it stands right now, they arrive very late, certainly, especially at the elementary level, and are not, just are not able to utilize the data, okay, for instructional purposes. But looking at having not only proficiency measures, but also growth over time, and looking at a balanced assessment model that would be, again, more equitable and, you know, looking at a much better picture of how students are progressing within the district. So, that certainly is a big focus. Also, to look at aligning those expectations more with the national expectations. In a few instances, in accountability models, Illinois has chosen to have higher expectations than the national expectations, and so it gives, we, it has proven to be a false or inaccurate picture of how Illinois students are truly performing when compared to their peers and compared internationally. So, there's lots of examples of that within the framework. So, certainly, certainly, we've shared it here, you know, back, looking at our SAT benchmarks that we were, that we had to follow, being, again, you know, the national, you know, the national benchmarks being lower than the state, what the state had put in place. So, really looking to have it more equitable and appropriate in terms of comparisons across the country internationally. And again, just looking to kind of have that reform on the mandate process to make sure that we can have flexibility in local decision-making around this. So, lots of efforts there. Go ahead, Charlie. And then the funding. So, making sure that what had been put in place, the evidence-based formula, funding formula that is currently in place, was actually a product of the Vision twenty twenty group. So, this has happened before in the past, and so one of the products of that visioning and advocacy was the evidence-based funding formula. And so, there's some, you know, some language that has, that is proposed within this vision process to ensure that, you know, that there's protections, to make sure that the integrity of the funding, the evidence-based funding formula stays in place. And so, looking more about really just the protection and maintenance of what is in place, not necessarily a new formula on the table. Also, looking at statewide funding sources, so things like some of the facilities grants that are available at the state level to make sure that those continue to be available, and also advocating for the federal funding. I know that's come up a few times tonight. We know we've got some potential for changes on the horizon. But one area, for example, Title Four is an area that has been allocated for us to be able to utilize for school safety measures, and so this does include some advocacy at the federal level for funding there. So, this, of course, was before some of the recent changes that have happened at the federal level that we're seeing now. And then also looking at the flexibility within school finances. Right now, there are quite a few restrictions for, you know, as funding is allocated, that we can't move, you know, funds between different accounts and for different purposes, and so really increasing the flexibility for schools to be able to meet their financial need within their budgets. So, that's also another aspect of it. So, overall, these are kind of the key goals within Vision twenty thirty. We are certainly, from the Superintendent's Association, and I know from the other associations that we represent here at the table, are certainly in favor of the direction. We are very much in line in terms of the priorities that we've set here in District Eighty-Eight, are certainly under this umbrella of very consistent with the state-level priorities. And we would recommend that we would join the many other districts that are going to be passing resolutions in support. It's really, we don't have any necessarily authority, you know, it's really symbolic, you know, to say that we are in favor of this direction and that, so that as legislators are going to consider different measures in the future to see that there is a, you know, that the districts are united in terms of identifying some of these needs. So, any questions? I know you've heard of some of this at, probably at the conference and in different, I know some, you are so involved in staying current on all these things. I know you've heard this before, so I appreciate you letting me walk us through it again tonight.
Yes, so, thank you. The vehicle, to achieve some of these goals would be working with the legislator, legislators?
Yeah, so it'll, you know, the different aspects of this are, what's the word? So, there are some things that are, that would require legislation to change. There are some things that can be, that we can advocate, you know, through the state board and through different, you know, different processes, you know, to request changes and request review of certain things, but there's quite a bit that is through legislation, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then we move along to information with no discussion, the Freedom Information Request and Credit Card Summary. Then we have school recognition.
Just real quick, entry place for the credit card summary, is we have a revised summary as we are still reviewing one of the purchases on the card.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then school recognition. We'll go ahead and start with the Addison Trail this evening.
Good evening, thank you. You know, Dr. Kraus and I both have this on our list, these first two events that we'd like to just recognize. You heard a little bit from Eddie talk about one of the events tonight, but our Student Leadership Summit was held last week, and that Student Leadership Summit is actually the second time that they've met, and it came out of their Superintendent's Advisory, kind of with this anti-bowling behavior interventions committee, we talked about it a little bit, just to bring, you know, students like Eddie and Leslie and other students who represent different clubs and organizations and the leaders on those teams, together to kind of discuss everything school, everything District Eighty-Eight. And they had an opportunity to hear a pretty strong message from, you know, former Chicago Bull Bill Cartwright, as well as kind of discuss some recent things at Addison Trail, some mental health-related things as well from Ms. Dowling and work with Dr. Humphrey. So, just absolutely incredible event that was held over at Willowbrook last Thursday. Yep. It just, you know, thanks for Willowbrook for hosting that. We had the following day, Mr. Cartwright actually came back for, we are in the month of February, Black History Month, we kind of kept it off with our Student African-American Conference, or SACON it was called. So, the students at Willowbrook and Addison Trail came over to Addison Trail and spent the day kind of learning their own history and learning the history of kind of those who did it first, was a little bit of the theme for our SACON this year. And then again, got to hear from Mr. Cartwright and kind of his experiences as an African-American male in the NBA during that time, too. So, just a powerful kind of week last week with the different leadership summit and SACON, want to make sure that we recognize both of those events. Addison Trail specifically, we had our honor roll assembly this morning, which was very well-attended. It's always a fun one for us, because our seniors are still with us for this one, so we do the two honor roll assemblies, and this is one where we get all four classes together and get to recognize them for all their hard work that they put in throughout first semester upcoming. We have the New York Fine Arts trip that's coming up. They leave Thursday, start to head to New York. They will spend time either performing or in different sessions or watching different performances. So, you know, hoping for a safe, fun travel or trip for them. This Friday, our staff will be participating in Countywide Institute Day. Reminder for our students, no attendance on Friday, as well as no school Monday. We kick back regular time on Tuesday. Addison Trail will be kicking off on Tuesday, music and theater in our Schools Week. On Wednesday, there will be a three A, three B schedule, where all students will be able to attend a music concert throughout the day. It also does kick off our Addison Trail Indian Trail music opportunities. So, we do choir, band, and orchestra three different nights. They start Thursday, March sixth, next week, and then band following week on Tuesday, March eleventh, and then orchestra that same Thursday, March thirteenth. Looking forward to it. I'm sure Dr. Kraus is going to talk about, as well, is Relay for Life at Willowbrook. We are sending a team over there. This is one that is close to many of our staff and students at Addison Trail. Ms. Delgado, who is actually here tonight, helped sponsor that group, and it's been a constant trickle of kids coming in to talk about Relay for Life that's happening over at Willowbrook, so looking forward to that, not this weekend, but next. In the athletics world, girls bowling competed at State this past weekend, our boys wrestling, we had two athletes compete, Mathias Hutzinger and Nico Duarte. Nico finished fourth place in the one-hundred-and-six-pound Class Three-A weight class, so he was on the podium. Pretty incredible experience for both of them, but, you know, special shout-out to Nico for, you know, making the podium there. Our boys basketball competes this Wednesday at seven-thirty at home in the IHSA State Playoffs, the regional round, and it is crazy to say it, sneaks up every year, but spring sports start next week. Absolutely nuts. I mean, it's fifty-something degrees this week, but can't believe we've got baseball and softball and all that start next week. But that's it for Madison Trail.
Thanks so much. Just want to echo, as Mr. Andrews mentioned, about the leadership conference and SACON on Friday, what great opportunities, and Dr. Valari Humphrey, the amazing work she does in coordinating that, and having the guest speakers that were in. All of our students rave about the opportunity to be a part of both of those, so those are fantastic. That's, this past week, we had an opportunity to host our third Outstanding Student Breakfast, where we recognize students from each of our departments, as well as a staff member. We'll be coming up very quickly on our final one, and we had to move that up a little bit with some other conflicting dates, and it'll be right toward the end of March will be our final Outstanding Student Breakfast for the school year. Upcoming events, the Winter Music Concert Series starts tomorrow night, we'll have the bands, the band performing, and then the choir on Thursday night, and then the orchestra next Thursday, March sixth. So, all those performances begin at six P.M. This Friday, we're going to celebrate our Business Professional America students who are competing at State with a send-off on Thursday, prior to their competition beginning this weekend, so incredibly excited for them. As we look forward to the events ahead, as Mr. Andrews said, we
Nico finished fourth place in the 106-pound Class 3A weight class, so he was on the podium. Pretty incredible experience for both of them, but, you know, special shout-out to Nico for, you know, making the podium there. Our boys basketball competes this Wednesday at 7:30 at home in the IHSA State Playoffs Regional Round. And it is crazy to say it, sneaks up every year, but spring sports start next week. Absolutely nuts. I mean, it's 50-something degrees this week, but can't believe we've got baseball and softball and all that start next week. But that's it for Madison Trail.
Thanks so much. Just want to echo, as Mr. Andrews mentioned, about the Leadership Conference and SACON on Friday, what great opportunities. And Dr. Valari Humphrey, the amazing work she does in coordinating that, and having the guest speakers that were in. All of our students rave about the opportunity to be a part of both of those, so those are fantastic. That's, this past week, we had an opportunity to host our third Outstanding Student Breakfast, where we recognize students from each of our departments as well as a staff member. We'll be coming up very quickly on our final one. We had to move that up a little bit with some other conflicting dates, and it'll be right toward the end of March will be our final Outstanding Student Breakfast for the school year. Upcoming events, the Winter Music Concert Series starts tomorrow night. We'll have the bands, the band performing, and then the choir on Thursday night, and then the orchestra next Thursday, March 6th. So all those performances begin at 6:00 PM. This Friday, we're going to celebrate our Business Professional America students who are competing at State with a send-off on Thursday prior to their competition beginning this weekend, so incredibly excited for them. As we look forward to the events ahead, as Mr. Andrews said, when we come back from the long week, well, first during the long weekend, we got that District 88 pickleball tournament. So we're looking forward to that. We can get you one of those Saran Wrap headbands if you'd like. You know, I think Mr. Sullivan will be helping to make those. But that's always a fun event, looking forward to it. But we will come back after the weekend for Brook Olympics Week. That's an opportunity for us to have like a spring spirit week, much like Homecoming, but we, we call it Brook Olympics. And then our Brook Olympics Assembly is that Friday, and then as Mr. Andrews mentioned, rolls right into Relay for Life. That entire week actually supports Relay for Life and the raising of funds for the American Cancer Society. So our students have a variety of different events and activities they participate in, incredibly competitive, but yet unifying at the same time. So definitely looking forward to that. In terms of athletics, congratulations to senior Naomi Campbell. She was here last year when she placed fifth overall on the floor exercises, but she competed this weekend in the IHSA State Championships for Gymnastics, and she qualified in the all-around. So she competed all night on Friday, had tremendous performances. She was fourth overall going into Saturday on the balance beam. Then she tweaked her routine a little bit, and if you get a chance to watch the video, she's the only one who did a dismount by doing a few full aerial. So normally on a, on a balance beam, you place your hands down, you flip, and then you dismount. She did it without the hands, landed on the beam again, then dismounted, which added the level of difficulty that vaulted her, that brought her into second place overall. So she is, she's now tied for the second, for the highest overall place finishing in girls gymnastics. She was also recognized as the Gymnast of the Year by the Coaches' Association. Just an outstanding story. What you'll hear when, when she gets introduced at the, at the board meeting is that she actually broke a finger at the beginning of the season, and it was very close to being a season-ending injury. But she came back, had a chance to be there again, and just her smile says it all in terms of the excitement and what a way to finish, because she was the second-to-last competitor in the entire evening. So it was really cool to have her finish that way and see everyone else celebrate. Congratulations to many of our winter sports teams. Our C Boy Swim Team had a great season. They competed in the IHSA Sectional Championship this past weekend. Boys Basketball just won their quarterfinal regional game. They'll play on Wednesday at 6 o'clock against Glenbar West, but will be playing at Addison Trail. Our boys and girls track and field teams continue to have great indoor seasons. Their back-to-back first-place finishes in theirs. And then the rest of our winter sports teams, girls basketball, the girls bowling, boys wrestling, girls wrestling, all had fantastic seasons and great, and great individual accomplishments, especially in the IHSA Series. Finally, we did host our Winter College Signing Day. We had seniors Kendall Manager and Audrey Morgan, who signed their National Letter of Intent. Kendall's going to play basketball next year at Central College, and Audrey is going to swim next year at Valparaiso. So congratulations and good luck to them, very excited. As Mr. Andrews said, can't believe spring sports are going to start on Monday. The snow is melting quickly, though, so that's always a good sign to get outdoor, outdoor time, but that's just a couple of quick updates.
Thank you. And Board Member Reports.
Dr. Kraus alluded to it, but we have our pickleball tournament this weekend for the district. It supports the District 88 Foundation, so we have, registration ends on the 26th, so we encourage you to come out and register. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other Board Member Reports? Okay, then Superintendent Report.
So just two quick announcements. Just wanted to recognize the Board President, Donna Kane, who received a Distinguished Annual Merit Award from the Illinois Association of School Boards. So she'll be recognized this Wednesday. We are hosting, actually, the Spring Illinois Association of School Boards Dupage Division Dinner, and we're hosting at Addison Trail on Wednesday night. So she will be recognized at that, at that dinner. And also, the District 88 School Board did receive the Governance Award again for just incredible work and this comprehensive nature of, of all of the accomplishments that, that the, the Board has earned over the last two years. So this is the second time that this Board has received that award, and that recognition will also be on March 5th at Addison Trail. So congratulations.
I didn't even know about that.
Yeah.
Okay, any public comments?
Good evening. We do not have any further comments at this time.
Do you guys want to put in a plug for the free lessons to sign up in case anyone's listening?
Sure, sure, yes.
Because we were slush, you know? Don't be afraid.
Sure, absolutely. So if you are new to pickleball, we do have the two divisions. So if you are newer, we have a division for you, and if you're more advanced, we have a division for you. And then as Ms. Burns was just saying, we even are offering a free lesson from 8:30 to 9:00 for anyone who is new but wants to play. So don't be, don't be afraid to join us if you're new. We will definitely help you out and make sure you have a good time.
Thank you. Okay, then we move on to announcements. The next Public, Board of Education meeting will, will be on Monday, March 10th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. And the following Board of Educational Meeting will be held on Monday, March 24th, 2025, 7:30 PM, District Boardroom located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois 60101. At this time, I entertain a motion to move into closed session for the purpose of A, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage increase. Transparency Act may be, may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held as, in accordance with the Act, five elementary statutes, 120/2C1, and B, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees of their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and C, the placement of individual students in special education programs and/or other matters relating to individual students, five elementary statutes, 120/2C10.
Second?
Okay, roll call, please.
So, Taylor? Yes, Yalvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, and we shall move into closed session.
We're back in open session. Roll call please.
Kane.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Finnegan.
Here.
Foiter.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
There's action necessitated by the closed session. I don't entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to pause the minutes of the closed sessions from June 10, 2024 through December 9, 2024, to remain classified and all other closed session minutes not listed on exhibit A and B shall continue to remain classified.
Second.
Okay. Roll call please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Foiter?
Yes.
Kane.
Yes. Motion's approved. I don't entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I favor shy.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Aye's have it and the meeting is adjourned.